I did.
Um, Chris?
In the car.
Oh, wait a minute, is that an Apple or not?
Apple.
Does anyone have my charging cord?
It wasn't smart chocolate in my mouth just then. I call this morning meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Item brings us to item 2.01, I mean 2.02, certification of closed session. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that at the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business managers lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. As stated in Virginia law, that only such public managers were identified in the motion committed to close the meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Thursday, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye, thank you. We've now certified our closed session. Ms. Thursday, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Item 3.02, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the agenda be approved as written.
Second. Ms. Thursday, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Item 4.01, announcements and superintendents report. Dr. Heron, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week in our schools. Many activities and celebrations have been planned to honor our hard-working teachers, and I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank our teachers for the dedication that they bring to their work every single day. I encourage everyone to take a minute to tell our teachers how much you value the integral role they play in making WJC a premier school division. Students from several of our elementary schools participated in Walk to School Day in commemoration of Earth Day. This effort was in partnership with James City County Police Officers, who assist in parents and students as they walk to school. Students said they enjoyed walking to school because it was good exercise, it's a chance to meet and socialize with others, and it is transportation-friendly. SOL testing will begin the week of May 8th and continue throughout the month of May. Please check your child's individual school website for up-to-date information regarding testing dates and times at each school. And finally, a family information night about the Pathways Project at War Hill High School will be held May 10th at 6:00 PM at War Hill. Information and an application are also available at wjcschools.org/thepathwaysproject. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Ombi.
Yes, just wanted to give a quick update. I attended the 21st Century Career and Technical Readiness Committee meeting last week where staff walked us through the review of the local CTE plan, where, and that's where we, our Perkins funds are derived, and they will present on that tonight. The next thing on their agenda is to prepare for the annual CTE committee report to the school board, which will happen in a few weeks. Wanted to update the community on the fact that we have a little over 117 applications now to the New Horizons program, which I think is, if not an all-time high, certainly a high in a very long time. And wanted to just share what I learned was that our capacity for WJCC is around 80, but that's kind of the threshold of the number of students who could be served at New Horizons, and that number is derived over a three-year average. So if we were to exceed that 80 threshold over a three-year period of time, that would then impact us financially, and so that would be a conversation that we would have with the other regional partners. And so that would typically be a financial consideration. Currently, we make up about 10% of the population of New Horizons, WJCC does. And that's all for my committee report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great, that moves us to 5.01, citizens comments. Ms. Hummel.
I'm going to have to read the thing because my, I don't have the internet connection.
Okay, sorry. Let me get down there. No problem. There we go. Here we go. Got it?
Where I can?
Here.
Okay, this is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, and state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making references to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I believe we have two speaker cards this evening?
Correct.
Mrs. Taylor? Thank you.
Danan Middleton, please.
Good evening. My name is Danan Middleton. It's common. Happens all the time. I work at Jamestown High School as an English Language Arts teacher. In light of, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you for being here. In light of Teacher Appreciation Week, I'd like to, for those that have not been in education, be aware of a few facts. First of all, teacher healthcare costs are increasing. Teacher housing costs are increasing, as are all of ours. We have constant increasing expectations and an ever-changing classroom environment, with the expectations being leveled higher and higher each year. We have demands on our education credentials to remain both licensed by the state and, if we wish to have any kind of pull or say or clout in the classroom with our students, with our administrators, with our peers, of course, we're going to continue our education then as well. And now, what I've read recently and looked at, the budget that was recently submitted from this school board to the James City County Board of Supervisors, included an increase in our, read teachers', healthcare insurance costs for our families. I have a family of six. This will cost me a great deal of money, as it will most of my peers. I have three questions regarding this. Number one, why use teachers as the tool to balance your budget? Number two, have you considered what effects this will have on both teacher morale, retention, recruitment? And number three, what cost-benefit ratio did you exactly use to suggest that this would be a good idea? All for the saving of $200,000 on a $132 million, give or take, budget? And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sandra Magda.
Good evening. I don't like the speaker really. I'm pretty loud, according to my mother. So, as you know, as I'm sure many people have read in the Gazette that our case was dismissed on a week ago Monday, and we will be refiling next week. We have actually been able to retain an attorney for our daughter since we have to put it in her name, which is not something that we had ever wanted to do, which is fine. It's been quite a journey. And it seems that every time we turn around, somebody in this district, it doesn't even matter who it is. I'm not going to say it was someone on the board because it may not have been, I'm not going to mention the name right now anyway, but you are the board. You lead the school district. You lead the school district. And I'm still trying to figure out why the harassment continues. Four days before we went to court last Monday, we get an email from a foundation that my daughter, Emma, has been fundraising for since she was five. She's raised $30,000 for them, for childhood cancer. And the email from the Gazette was sent to this foundation's CEO stating that they felt they should check into our fundraising, and then sent the article of how much money we spent. We had to spend, instead of getting ready for court like we had wanted to, and we were pretty much mostly ready, we had to go through five years of records to turn over. Of course, we came ahead. They had actually missed out on 5,000 over that five-year period. But we waited. We're going to wait till the dust settles, and I want to know who sent that email. It came from WWJCC School Address. There are thousands of employees here. I don't understand that. Why would somebody do that? Why would somebody do that? I don't care if you do it to my husband and I. We can handle, we can handle a lot. We have three girls. We can handle a lot. But to question my 10-year-old's heart and her integrity, that's honestly, after all we've been through in the last 22, 23 months, is about as low as it got. We've been called borderline child abusers by someone on the school board. We've been gotten, we've gotten emails and mails in the letter stating how horrible we are and that our daughter wasn't bullied, it's just regular pranks going on. You guys just don't get it. You guys are not taking what happens in these schools seriously. And we're still here, and we are not going anywhere until somebody listens. These schools need to change. The way that bullying or discipline in the schools is handled has to be addressed. I'm sorry if it brings people's numbers down, that you're not the greatest school district. Because, from what I've had and what's gone, I promise you, there is more going on that you guys are reporting to the state.
Thank you. Can you turn that off? I apologize. Press end. That's weird. Sorry. We've had some technical difficulties this evening.
Those are all our speaker cards for tonight?
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. That brings us to item 6.01 from Proposed Agenda Items. Approval of the 2017-2018 Code of Conduct. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Each year, a code of conduct is required by the Code of Virginia, Section 22127601, to be approved annually by the school board, and Ms. Bujhwa is here this evening to present the updated version of the code of conduct. Thank you, Ms. Bujhwa.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. You have a copy of the draft code of conduct before you. It's the magenta color. I think that's what you call it, is magenta? Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2017-18 Code of Conduct. It is brought before the school board annually for your review and approval. It was last approved on June 21st, 2016. The policy revisions found in the code of conduct have been reviewed by our attorney. WJCC utilizes a committee approach to revising the code of conduct. This committee is comprised of parents and school staff, and the committee met three times during the second semester of the school year. To begin with, all identifying information has been updated to reflect changes, natural changes, such as our new superintendent and the school year for next year to be 2017 and 18. Beginning on page six, you will see that the bus and bus stop expectations have been added. That was something that the board asked for, and we've had a bus committee working for the past year. This page provides very specific expectations and was created as a collaborative effort with members of our Transportation Department. And we really worked to have a usable layout there. Page seven includes adjustments to our Level One and Level Two consequences for infractions. Additional options have been added to Level One to support our focus on learning and restorative opportunities. It also supports the state's focus on the classrooms-not-courtrooms initiative. The additional options include education remediation, restorative practices, and counselor-support staff referral interventions. One item was moved from Level One to Level Two. That's the removal from class and timeout. This was done based on the committee's belief that other options should be considered prior to the loss of instructional time. We didn't want that as a Level One option when we're really trying to focus on interventions and teaching opportunities. The annual review of the rules, which do make up our policy JFC student conduct, resulted in no recommendations for revision this year. However, there were some recommendations to adjust the consequent ranges, which you will see to the side of the rules. In all cases of the recommended changes, the beginning of the range was lowered. And again, that's to try to increase our options and our opportunities to work with students and families at a variety of levels. It impacts the following rules. On page 10, for bomb threats, for grades K5, it now starts at a Level One. The committee felt this allowed consideration for the developmental reasoning of some of our youngest students. For bullying and cyberbullying, on page 10, it was For bullying and cyberbullying, on page 10, it was adjusted to begin at a Level One for our K-5 students. It does go up to a Level Four. For fighting, on page 11, the range is now one to four for K-5 and two to five for grades six to 12. And on page 12, hazing, the range is now two to five for our grades six to 12. You will also see, as you're looking at those rules, that there are also, some policy references have been added. An example can be found on page 11, under Driving Infractions, where the policy name and then page number have been added as a reference for parents and students. So if there's a policy in the code of conduct that actually supports a specific rule, we're making reference to that because those policies are found later in the document. Finally, on page 36, Policy EEACC Bus Safety Rules has been deleted and replaced with Policy JFCC Student Conduct on School Buses. These policies are being brought to you later tonight, in the, later in the agenda, under Policies for your consideration. As you can imagine, an annual review of a document of this type cannot be done without a great deal of collaboration. I'd like to thank the building staff members who provided input, committee members, and my staff for their assistance in getting this set up. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mrs. Young?
Hi. Hi, Ms. Bourgeois, how are you doing?
I'm doing well.
How are you tonight? I have a question about the bus safety, that's a big one for me. I'm interested in finding out, how are these rules expressed to students? Do they just get their written form, or do they have actually a seminar on it, or beginning, at the beginning of the school where they actually talk about them, or how are they implemented?
At the beginning of this school year, we started the bus committee last year, and so at the beginning of this school year, we actually did a training with administrators and bus drivers, and then the administrators did it with their teachers. So this was reviewed by the teachers with their students. We also have a similar poster, looks a little different, that's been created and posted on every bus to reinforce those rules. So it's done numerous ways.
Is transportation involved at all?
They've been involved from the start. They are, they are active members of our bus committee. It's about half-transportation, half-school-based folks.
Because, I mean, I appreciate that input because they're, they're the ones that have to deal with the disruptive behavior on the bus. Okay, thank you very much.
We actually had a meeting today, so it's an ongoing committee.
Okay.
Ms. Ombi?
I just wanted to say I'm pleased with the addition of the bus and bus stop expectations. I think that's great. Very thorough and unworkable.
Dr. Bears?
Yeah, I'm curious, since you had transportation involved, which of these kinds of behaviors seem to be the most frequent that they've talked about, that students exhibited?
You know, it's, it's similar to what we see in the classrooms. It's the not following directions if they're asked to sit down, or picking on each other, talking to each other, getting out of their seat. So it's, it's similar to what we would see in the classrooms. Yes, ma'am?
Under, you know, where you have all the phone icons that says required to be reported to law enforcement, does that mean the school resource officers in the school, is that what you mean by law enforcement?
Yes, typically, I mean, in secondary schools, it's, it's the, the school resource officer. If it's a, something in the elementary school that follows under one of those rules, they have assigned officers that they contact.
So it, I just wanted to clarify to the general public-
Yes.
-that it does not mean, sorry, that it does not mean that, you know, the county, city police are called in?
No, not necessarily.
On page 38, I noticed that, I know we had, yes, you know me and my editing, I noticed that the last two paragraphs are redundant because I believe that the old-
You're right.
...policy was copied in there, and then we put the new one next to it.
Thank you very much. We did catch a spacing issue there, so I thought I had it.
Anything else? Ms. Ombi?
If I could just go back to what Ms. Hummel said, Dr. Bourgeois, with regard to the telephones and notifying the authorities, it's a judgment call, so while it's, it's not, it's a judgment call.
If we use a rule that has a phone, we are required to notify. That part is not a judgment call. It's up to the SRO, based on the information we give them, what happens with that information. It does not mean that charges are always filed. It means that we have made the notification.
So it automatically goes to the SRO, and then they make the determination if it goes to the next level?
Based on their standards.
Their standards.
So we, we, we use our rules, and if we determine an incident follows under a rule that's required for notification, we do the notification. Then they decide what they do within their realm.
And is the notification, is that legally, like, the SBA, like, what, what determines when? Huh? It's the law, I mean, I just-
If we decide to use one of these rules, so if we use, if we use, so for instance, let me find the rule, if we go to the very first page of rules, I think the very first one, so if we use assault and battery, it has a phone. If we've determined that it is an assault and battery, it's not a fight, it's not just a shoving incident, it's an assault and battery, then we are required to notify police of the incident, and we share the information about the incident with the police.
And that's required by law?
By law.
That's, I just want to make sure-
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
It is required by, all of these things that have-
The phones are required by law.
Are required by law.
Yes, ma'am.
But the police are the SRO, they're-
Yes, I mean-
Okay, so it's, it's the officer that's in our building?
They are.
Who knows our students?
If they're available. If they're not available and we need to do a notification, we will do it otherwise.
Okay. Is that reported to the State? Are those reports forwarded to the State?
Yes, we actually have to document that we've notified them.
Right.
It's part of our documentation process within our synergy.
Do you have any other edits? Mrs. Young?
I'm checking the-
Okay, great. All right, anything else? Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Bourgeois, I appreciate it. That brings us to item 6.02, the Carl D. Perkins Grant, 2017-2018. Sorry, Dr. Heron, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're having technical difficulties tonight.
That's fine. Annually, we bring the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Plan and Budget to you for your consideration, and Ms. Parker is here this evening to present that plan on our behalf. Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, reauthorized in 2006, provides federal funds to increase focus on academic achievement of our CTE students, strengthen connections between secondary and post-secondary education, as well as improve state and local accountability. And each year, we're required to annually develop and implement a local plan for CTE in order to be eligible for this funding. So this is the plan in which we will review this evening. The first piece of that plan includes performance standards, and as you'll see here, we have met and exceeded Virginia-agreed-upon performance levels in all but one category, and we saw significant improvement in many different categories. For example, if you look at the student competency rate, last year, we reported that number is 56.63%, and that has increased to 95.51 under all completers. And if you move over to the right, under special populations, that number increased from 56% to 93.4%. Some additional significant improvements, under secondary placement rate, that number increased from 93% to 98% under all completers, and in special populations, that increased from 84% to 93.33%. Also, in the program completer response rate, that went up from 75% to 80.72%. And then finally, in the non-traditional career preparation completion, we reported, or that was reported a 0% in the previous year, and that's gone up to 52.89%. And I do want to note the one area and category in which we did not quite meet the Virginia-agreed-upon performance level, and that is test takers, completers, passing credentialing test rates in the special population category. That's the fifth one down, and then all the way over, sixth one down, all the way over to the right, we scored 77.65% there. And I do want to note that this was an almost 2% increase from the previous year, and the previous agreed-upon performance level was 77%. So we did exceed that, and we are still continuing to make progress in that area.
Madam Chair, may I ask questions along the way so we don't get too far away?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I forget. So if we could just go back to the first-
Sure.
-page, and if you could elaborate on why we, the percentages have gone up almost double?
Yeah, absolutely. So for the student competency rate, we really had a renewed focus on our procedures and expectations in regards to our students' competency records into a consistent approach for the entire division as to how often those are completed throughout the semester and what that criteria is. And I think that really contributed a lot to the percent increase there.
But that, just, that was the area that we, that we had an issue with last year, correct? There was a, there was a, a reporting issue last year?
I believe on the next page, a large part of that issue was with the non-traditional career preparation completion. That was where we had, it was reported zero.
Zero, that's right.
And the accurate number for this year is the 52.89%.
Great, okay.
Yep. And then some of the other changes, for secondary placement rate, we have a designated transition specialist, and I believe that that's really assisted in increasing that percentage there. Under the program completer response rate, we now have a formal process and timeline that we use in order to get those surveys completed. Everything is online, and we can update it real-time. So it's updated real-time, and we can continue to monitor that and encourage that to be And overall, for this plan, we had a zero, or we reported zero performance standards that were not met for the first time. Last year, that was reported one. We reported zero performance standards that were not met for two consecutive years, which is great, last year that number was three. And we just had that one performance standard this year that was not met for the three consecutive years. When we talk about our performance standards, a lot of this refers to our industry credentials, and so I wanted to speak about that just briefly. Last year, we had 595 total credentials earned by WJCC students, and here is a complete listing of the different credentials in which our students earned.
What was that last?
The year prior. We had 509, so we increased 90 credentials.
In what areas did you see the biggest increase?
I can do a breakdown, and I can certainly get that to you.
I just wondered if it's, you know, evidence of a trend?
We are seeing more students who are completing more than one credential.
And can you tell us how many of these can be completed here in WJCC versus New Horizons?
Absolutely, and some of them overlap. So I'll, let me go ahead and do a breakdown for that, and I can send that to you because we do have many that overlap that we offer the same credential as New Horizons does. So moving on to Schedule I of the actual Local Perkins Plan. These stakeholder groups are involved in the development, implementation, and evaluation of our CTE program, and they assisted in supplying information for this plan, they provided substantial consultation for this plan, and they also reviewed and critiqued the plan. And the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee reviewed and approved the plan on April 25th, prior to us bringing it here to you. Moving on to Schedule III. Each year, we submit a Career Pathways Plan of Study that represents a career cluster and a specific career pathway, and includes grades seven through 12 course planning in order to reach that goal. This year, you can see, we chose our career plan to focus on the information technology career cluster, and the career pathway we focused on was programming and software development. We included our new course, Computer Science Applications, in there as well. And you can see our previous two years of other plans of study. We work hard to make sure that we are going after different career clusters and different pathways each year. And this was actually approved by the VDOE. Schedule IV refers to our special populations. These are the current numbers of our division's special populations. And in the bullets below those are different activities and services that we provide to prepare, or prepare our special populations for careers and occupations that lead to self-sufficiency.
Just so I, the number of single parents means what?
Yes, that's the number of reported current, and that, and that number changes, but that's the current number of single parents reported in our student information system.
Meaning the student, the students are single parents?
Yes, ma'am, that the student is a single parent, pregnant or single parent. Mm-hmm.
So, so that first number, the 4,084, really converts to about 41% of the student population?
Yes.
Is that how we did?
Economically disadvantaged, yes.
Economically disadvantaged, right, okay, just want to make sure I understood.
Correct.
And Ms. Parker, can you explain the difference in the number of students with disabilities versus what's reported in the special education?
Absolutely. For the Local Perkins Plan, we are required to report this number to include both our students with disabilities as well as our students receiving Section 504 plans, so that number is combined. And so that's the difference. We had 1,739 students with disability and 357 students on 504 plans, so that number combined is the figure that we see there.
And so this really truly is the true picture of students with disabilities because students who are receiving services through a 504 also have a diagnosed disability, so, so this was eye-opening to me. It's not 1,700-ish, it's a little over 2,000 students with disabilities that we're serving.
What is, oop, this place told me.
I knew you were going to ask.
I know. I will get the exact definition to you, word for word, because that one can be a little confusing. So let me pull the exact definition, and I can send that to you.
Thank you.
Schedule V through 10 refer to our Perkins-supported programs, and they allow us to identify activities we use to improve academic and technical skills of students, to develop and expand our use of technology, to provide experience and understanding of all aspects of industry, to provide professional development, as well as to improve and modernize each of the programs listed. At WJCC, our students through us are able to access business and information technology, family and computer sciences, health and medical sciences, marketing and technology education, and are also able to access trade and industrial education as well as agricultural education at New Horizons. Schedules 11 through 14 are really a narrative, just providing further explanation and details about our CTE programs and the information that we are reviewing. And Schedule 15, this breakdown determines the amount of Perkins funding that will be allocated to New Horizons. And you can see the different formulas that are used there in order to get that figure.
Just so, so we send Perkins, our proportion of Perkins funds, and then we also send a per head?
Yes. So New Horizons does not receive any Perkins funding, and so they receive that through our portion, and all the other school divisions as well. And Schedule 16 through 18, these are the budget of our Perkins funds. As you can see here, we have budgeted for 56.7% to go to capital outlay and equipment. This is refreshing labs, hardware, software. 21.3% to go to purchase services, so professional development, student activities for our special populations and our New Horizons Regional Tech Center. 18.3% to go to indirect costs and other charges. These are conference registration fees, professional organization memberships, administrative support, or administration. And 3.7% to go to personnel services. This is typically administrative support for CTE credentialing and state reporting. And finally, just a- And finally, just a five-year review of our entitlement of funds. And you can see here what our estimated amount is for school year two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen.
Markably similar to the previous year.
It is, but we are actually required to base the initial budget off of the exact amount that we were allocated the previous year. So once the state sends their allocations down to the local divisions, we go back and amend that.
These are, these are showing an increase every year because we are showing an increase in that population. Is that why? Or just that we just?
There's a variety of factors, I think, that increases.
That's too logical.
The state receives their allocation, and then they have a formula in which they distribute allocations to local school divisions. I am, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Does anyone have any additional questions, Ms. Parker?
I would just like to thank you, thank you for the presentation. It's amazingly complicated form for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars with lots of data and lots of places that trip up, so. But I do appreciate your good work and put that together and for this presentation as well.
It is a lot of work.
It is.
Well, and I just wanted to echo, I know that you and Mr. Powell have done a lot to ensure that we're, as a division, are doing a good job with collecting data and reporting the accurate data, and so that has been a yeoman's job. So thanks for
Thank you.
putting all those processes in place so that data can be collected correctly.
Dr. Herron?
Just like to say a personal thank you to Ms. Parker as well. We're in a very different position this year to last year, and you haven't learned and taken over and made a big difference in a year, so thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
So you look at the, you look at the slide with fifty-six percent, I was like, wow. And then I look, and it's like, oh, it's sixty thousand dollars.
Right. I understand it this year, so thank you very much.
Okay, that's great.
Hey, we'll take any amount we can get.
Yes.
That's true.
Right, it's true. Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
That brings us to item six point zero three, school bus purchase.
Dr. Herron? Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to speak to us about the purchase of two school buses with this year's funding. Mr. Snipes?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Dr. Herron, stated in previous occasions, we're back for our annual pilgrimage for requesting of year-end priorities, as well as CIP projects. The purchase of the two school buses in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is part of the annual school bus replacement plan. As you're aware, the state requires, recommends that we, not requires, but recommends that we replace buses every fifteen years. The purchase of these two school buses will allow us to complete our school bus replacement cycle for this year. We've replaced eight already, and these two will allow us to replace ten as scheduled. This will move us forward with the bus replacement plan, with no additional buses coming due in replacement in FY two thousand eighteen. The contract is through Sonny Merriman. The contract is through Sonny Merriman, vendor Sonny Merriman, who is our state contract. And the purchase will, like I said, replace two buses in the amount of one hundred eight thousand seven fifty each, for a total of two seventeen two fifty. The other thing that we would like to let you know is that a budget transfer is requested for, from vehicle fuel for the replacement of these buses.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Snipes?
Is this, does this complete the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, or the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, or is this do the fiscal year two thousand eighteen?
It completes fiscal year two thousand eighteen. I mean, two thousand seventeen.
So we bought eight last year, this adds two, so that makes, that's our total for ten?
Ten.
We bought eight earlier in the year, right?
Early in the year.
Right. So it'll be a ten in this fiscal year, which keeps us on target for this year.
Bought eight in two thousand sixteen.
But fiscal year seven?
Fiscal year seventeen, calendar year sixteen.
Okay, I'll behave. Thank you, Marson.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Snipes? So next year, though, all bets are off, right, for staying on track? But because of the life of our buses, that, that's not necessarily a bad thing, is that right? Because we have some breathing room there, is that right?
Well, there would be breathing room, but the issue would be, in the years following that, the number of buses we would require is huge, so we may want to look at it next year so that we can actually keep on track in the subsequent years.
But right now, ten a year is what we would like to have.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. That brings us to item six point zero four, DJ Montague Elementary School Bus Canopy Construction Parking Lot and Sidewalk Project.
Again, these projects are included in the FY sixteen and FY eighteen CIP in the amounts of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars and eighty thousand five hundred dollars respectively. Design for these projects were done by Hopkey and Associates and VHB. The FY sixteen project is a WJCC recommendation because at that time, we had not done a facility condition index. And the FY eighteen project was requested for compliance purposes. The work under these projects consists of the construction of a canopy for at our school bus loop, or at DJ Montague for FY sixteen, and for FY eighteen, a regrade and repaving of twelve existing parking spaces with an optional bid item that includes ADA compliant passenger loading zones. An invitation for bid was sent out on March twenty-fourth, and the total base bid will be used to determine the lowest and responsive bidder. And as a reminder, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the detailed vendor award information will be provided at the May sixteenth School Board Meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Snipes? I apologize, I did not notice this before. I would have, so, but FY eighteen, can you help me understand the timing on that?
Yes. We are requesting that you look at this now so that we can provide the vendor ample time to be able to get ready to start the project. Again, this is a compliance issue, federal compliance issue.
So a lot of, a lot of boxes have to be checked between now and then for this to?
Right.
So then will this come back to us for approval at the next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. By then, we will know more, though. Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Anything else? Thanks. Sorry about that. The light bulb just went on there.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Okay, that brings us to item six point zero five, transfer of funds and purchase approval for middle school and high school technology. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Landers is going to speak to us tonight about the middle school personalized learning and high school pathways, projects, technology needs, and take us through that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Herron, this evening, we're asking your consideration and approval of a transfer of funds and purchasing of student-use laptops per School Board Policy DJ that requires board approval for purchases in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, as well as School Board Policy DA that requires board approval for transfer of funds from one budgetary category to another. As the board is aware, the division is in the third year of the personalized learning one-to-one program at the middle schools, which currently has laptops assigned to every middle school student with the exception of eighth grades at Hornsby and Berkeley. Additionally, we will be expanding the War Hill Pathways Program by one hundred students next year. This budget transfer and purchase are to purchase seven hundred student-use laptops to support these programs. The requested transfer of funds would move three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from the Instructional Services Cost Center to the Technology Cost Center. The purchase would provide three hundred laptops each for Berkeley and Hornsby, and one hundred laptops to War Hill. The total cost for this expansion is three hundred fifty thousand seventy-seven dollars. The requested transfer would move fiscal year two thousand seventeen funds in the amount of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, with the remaining two thousand seventy-seven already allocated in the Technology Cost Center. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Landers? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seven point zero one, redistricting. So, before I hand it over to Dr. Herron, this, tonight, we're hoping to give enough guidance to the administration. We started to, at the last meeting, but hopefully tonight, we'll give enough guidance to Dr. Herron so that she and her team can finish crafting the RFP and hire a consultant to work with to determine how to go about the task of redistricting, and to bring us something that we, as a board, can adopt next year. So at the last meeting, we determined that we would ask the administration to issue an RFP for a full-service firm, and that we would ask for pricing on both middle school and high school redistricting. So now, we've been provided with sort of a sketch of what the scope of work might look like to respond to, and so it's appropriate for us to kind of talk through this and provide guidance to Dr. Herron so she and her team can get to work. So with that, I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Herron, if you'd like to share anything with us, or?
Madam Chair, I think you've really given us a good introduction already. We've provided the board with a very preliminary scope of work that we want your input on to see if it's what you want us to move forward with. So having read that, I just would open the floor for discussion of that and ask for your input on the scope of work, the draft that we've given to you.
So I'll seek your guidance as a group in terms of how we approach this discussion. We can respond to the document that's been provided to us, or we can talk about it sort of topically by feeder pattern and capacity and the other issues that we talked about last time. So I don't know if anyone wants to jump in, or if they have any thoughts, but.
I'd like to talk about the feeder pattern.
Okay.
Which is, first of all, I'd like to know which of these elementary schools feeds into the middle school, which middle school they feed into? Do we have that information?
Yeah.
Because I was, I've been looking for it.
Right here.
What did I miss?
It's right here.
I don't have that. Thank you.
So, you know, I think Mr. Kelly made his point eloquently last, at the last meeting with, you know, let's just do middle school, and then, and then see where we are from there. And I think that there's good wisdom in that. But what gives me pause is this idea of feeder patterns. And, you know, I don't know whether feeder patterns are a good idea or not, but I, that's one thing that I'd like professional input on from, from a vendor that selected. Mrs. Hummel's document, which I just handed to Mrs. Young, really did make me wonder about that because can you do feeder patterns in a vacuum at one level? And while importantly, I'm curious and would like some expert advice on what the benefits are? Are they, are they simply operational, and if so, to what extent? Or is there a social, emotional aspect? And if so, is that more realized at the upper level than at the elementary school level? So those are the kind of questions that, that I am, you know, curious about in terms of the scope of work. And I wonder if it's of value to, to open, or thinking up, to include that and be open to that recommendation from a firm that does this all the time and might have access to information and experience that we don't currently have. But, I mean, I don't know about feeder patterns, if, given where our schools are, that works or not. But I'd like to understand it better. Yeah?
Yeah, I have a thought about that. We've had informally, we've had feeder patterns for years. So I think, and I think, I think, given the size of the school district, I think, I think, for the most, I think feeder patterns are appropriate. Larger school systems, like Emrico, will, they provide a lot more options for students when they leave the elementary grades, but we're a smaller school system. So I, 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 I think one of the things about the feeder patterns, and I think Mrs. Hummel pointed that out, I think it was last time, when only twelve kids come from a school to another school, that's, that's, to me, that's a bad example of a feeder pattern. But I think, I think the overall idea, I think it is sound. It allows, you know, kids to stay with their peers as they, as they go through, as they go through school. Not totally related to that, but I didn't, I wasn't quite sure about when you were doing the projections at the elementary levels, for example. That's what I was considering. Are we using, are we using live births? What, what mechanism are we using to determine how many, you know, as we're making projections about the elementary schools, obviously, that has impact on middle school and high school. But I'm just, I'm curious about, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Thank you, Ms. Verda.
Thank you. Good evening. They are using birth rates, and there's a number of other factors that they look at with cohort survival methods, looking at our pre-K programs, seeing how many of those children would transition into our kindergarten through K twelve, or through K, through twelve, excuse me. So they are evaluating those things. In this community, and I think it's a national thing, birth rates have declined. So we are seeing some of that adjustment. It does level back out, and it peaks and it valleys. But there was a consistent period where birth rates were high in this community, and that has dropped off. That began back in the recession. So, yes, they do use that.
Okay. And, well, I'll wait, I'll, I'll, I'll wait. Thanks.
Sure.
No, thank, because I wanted to make sure I understood that.
Any other thoughts on? Any other thoughts on feeder patterns?
Yeah. Just, I mean, we're gonna have four middle schools and three high schools, so regardless, we're not gonna have this beautiful, we could never create a beautiful feeder kind of system when you have more middle schools than high schools. So I, I think I'm, I'm fine with a, a split, you know? You have to be between the middle schools, so much of a populate forty percent and sixty percent going to different schools. And I cannot even see a benefit to that because then later on, when there is redistricting that occurs, and a student maybe gets redistricted to another high school, they would still possibly know some kids from middle school, depending on what happens. So I think there's some value in a modified feeder system where you have a, kind of a split between who's going to, maybe not three high schools, but just, I think, for the emotional well-being of the students to know, no matter where they go, they're gonna know some other students.
I think the other thing, too, is if we had distinctly different curriculum, curriculum in each of the three high schools, then I think that the feeder question would become mute because kids who wanted to go down one path would opt for this school. But as far as I can tell, as the pathways program expands out into the other schools, the overall curriculum is relatively the same for all three high schools. Am I right about that?
As the programs are developed, I think the thought is that there'll be different opportunities offered at each of the high schools. Some of the basic curriculum will remain the same, but the actual, there'll be a focus, for example, of medical sciences at Jamestown, and leadership and entrepreneurship at Lafayette High School. So they will be different, and students may choose to go different pathways based on that. With regard to feeder patterns, I think there is a predictability, ease of transition for students, alignment of neighborhoods, potential efficiencies in transportation. We will never have perfect feeder patterns in the system, but there are some pros of looking at a modified version of that.
One of the things with, one of the things with redistricting is that you have lots of variables. Neighborhoods, location, proximity to the school, socioeconomic, and now adding feeder systems onto that, from four different-sized middle schools to three different-sized high schools, it gets to be a very, it's more, we're into serious calculus here and not just arithmetic. I mean, it's, it's, it's just get another thing that we're adding on top of our criteria. And I just, I just think that we need to really think about our criteria as we keep expanding, should we think about this, should we think about that? I mean, there's, there's, you know, the basic things of how close you are to schools, how I mean, there's, you know, the basic things of how close you are to schools, how your neighborhood, you know, and the socioeconomic thing. The other thing too is with the kids, the 12 kids, for instance, 12 kids go to Tuana, is it from Tuana to Lafayette instead of War Hill, how are they senior year? By the time they're halfway through freshman year, integrated, know their people, I mean, what's, you know, is it, does that, them on the island, I mean, does that really carry through to, for four years of high school? Or is it, because kids moving in and out of our community all the time, military kids moving out of our community all the time, that's just part of what the kids have to, have to adjust to, the families have to adjust to, and it's, I don't know that we necessarily have to have a criteria for that, so.
And I'm not advocating for one, I'm advocating for wanting to get professional advice on it because it could be that a professional firm comes in here and says, given the size, the shape of your locality, given the location of your schools, we think that feeder patterns are too high a bar to, you know, to clear. So that's, that's sort of what I'm looking for, is asking the administration to explore that, to see if that's something we should consider as a board and make a recommendation on the, you know, on the tail end of this as opposed to a criteria. I think criteria is probably a too-strong a word, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I guess just to that point and thinking about helping the administration craft an RFP with regard to feeder programs, I would like more information. I would like to learn, you know, can, could we, one, is it feasible in our community? And is it feasible to do six through 12? Does it have to be K through 12? What is the impact of just doing it at the secondary level? Does anyone else do that at just the secondary level? And then two, with regard to determining the criteria that we will eventually have to determine, I would like some more professional information from other communities, you know, what do other communities typically use? We know what we've used in the past, we know that York County is going through this right now, and they're looking at proximity, capacity, minimal neighborhood separation and SES. They want to remain static and no change in SES numbers in all of their schools. So we know what our neighbors are doing, but if we could craft an RFP, I would like to know, you know, what are other communities that kind of look like us? What do they typically use as a criteria when they redistrict as guidance? Ultimately, we'll make that decision, but I would like to know what other folks are doing.
So what I've heard generally is that you really are looking forward to having an expert on site to have more thorough discussions of what you should use as criteria to redistrict rather than deciding now ahead of having someone to really take us through it as a system.
And along with the superintendent and the board would also assume, I assume, will create the criteria that we would give that consulting firm, because they're the ones who ultimately are going to, I understand the process. They'll create, they'll, they may create several different scenarios, you know, several different kinds of maps, but it's always going to come back to what criteria we give them. They're generally not going to create their own criteria, they're going to use a criteria that we...
And I would like that criteria to be developed by our school board, by this group of people right here, with information.
Yes, that was what I meant.
Gathered by other people as something that we can rely on, but that we ultimately as a board make a unified decision on what the criteria is.
And I guess, so my language would be best practice. So using consultants, you know, what is best practice for developing criteria?
Yeah, I'd rather have criteria recommended to us customized to our needs based on what they, feedback they've gotten from, from the board and from the community that we can then adopt, you know, sanction, as opposed to us crafting criteria. That, I don't know that.
Yes, I just don't want us to move down the path that we were in 2007.
I agree.
Okay, where the criteria is being crafted through kind of amorphous community sort of, it was...
No, and I've, I've actually talked to former board members who were on the board for 2007, '07 and '10, 2010. And that was, and one of the comments that was made was that, exactly that about the, we certainly want input from the community, but it got, I think it got a little out of control and they realized that, so I second that as well.
If I would take you to the RFP and the very first bullet in the language, the draft language is the, you want the services of a consultant to be required but not limited to assist in the development of criteria to create school attendance area options. So they will take you through it, but you'll make the choice based on the knowledge they bring to the table.
Yeah, their recommendation, yeah. Anything else about feeder patterns? Does anyone want to discuss capacity as a criteria? I'm going through the original document that we got from, and that was one of the recommendations for consideration. So did you, yeah?
I had a, because I, I think one of the things, and I think that was done, and Mr. Kelly, you correct me if I'm wrong, the last time, I think that we also got some indication in terms of neighborhood growth or what, you know, where the additional growth was going to be and what neighborhoods or who was planning a new development or those kinds of things. Did any of that, I know you were only on there for three months, do you, because I actually, I did talk to somebody and I didn't get a, you know, they do remember and they thought that somebody from the county had talked to them about that, but I think that would, you know, I think that's important to know. And maybe it's really hard to get that information too, but if you can. Obviously, we have data. We know where, right now, we know which neighborhoods have been growing. Do we not?
The planning departments have them, but you can't ever predict, other than age-restricted communities, which ones are going to, I mean, you know, neighborhoods turnover.
I just want to know where the growth is.
Yeah, but it has to be growth in school-aged kids.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's where the challenge was. We had did some work a few years ago where we had the planning, the planning departments from the county come in and kind of tell us where the growth was going to be, and it was all in the, it was pretty much in the center of the county. So I'm trying to think back to seven years ago, it gets farther away every day, of what we were thinking about back then. I think we were at that time, when I got here, I think we were only talking about how many kids were there versus looking at the growth in those, in those areas. You know, the other, other variable in this equation too is 64, although that is a mess today. When that opens up as six lanes, there could conceivably be, and there's several hundreds of building permits that have already been issued for James City County, that, you know, where is that, is there a potential for another growth spurt there? Because once all those orange barrels come down in however many years it's going to be, you know, there could conceivably be a lot of people moving into this community because of the easier access to the south side, so.
So, Dr. Heron, can you, because we've seen different numbers for capacity and there's different definitions, and so can you clarify for us which, the documents that you provided, which capacity, are those V, R numbers, VDO? Just if you could, I know there's different definitions in different ways. If you could clarify that for us, that'd be great.
I believe we're using the VDOE definition of capacity, but I'm going to check with both Mr. Snipes and Ms. Burda to confirm that that's the data that we have in front of us.
Yeah, okay.
That is correct. We get guidance from VDOE for what capacity means and what the definition is. I think Mr. Snipes has that definition. The state operating capacity is based upon the total number of core subjects, classrooms in a school building and the pupil teacher ratio of each classroom as per the standards of quality codes of Virginia, section 22.1-253-13 colon 2. Also included are self-contained special education classroom spaces, however, resource classrooms are not counted. So in addition to that, in 2013, there also was a study done for this division that incorporated pieces of that to look how we were utilizing our buildings. And in our budget book document, that is the capacity numbers that have been derived for how we compare percentage-wise as well as enrollment, true enrollment numbers.
Okay, thank you.
So those, our capacities are based upon SOQ numbers, not what we use as our student ratio?
No. It's based on our student ratio numbers.
Okay, which is less than SOQ.
Right.
Correct.
So we're even fuller.
That's the guidance that comes from VDOE, but we incorporate our practice.
If you put 28 kids in a classroom versus 24 kids in a classroom, you have more kids than...
But you need more classrooms.
Yes, right.
So...
So it all depends on your definition of fullness.
Yeah.
Is?
I believe in researching today, the VDOE standard SOQ is 35 and ours is much less, the target ratio is much less than their SOQ. They say you can put 35 in a classroom, which...
A lot of kids in a classroom. Well, that also depends on the size of the classroom, too.
Correct. Mr. Kelly, you mentioned earlier about a study, I think Mrs. Overcamp Smith provided something to us a couple of months ago that said that the 184 new middle school students, 65% of middle school students generated in those known developments. I think you were referring to this document.
Yeah, I remember the big red circle.
I remember the circle.
The oval.
So what, and to that point of being fuller or less full, even in this, so even in a school like Stonehouse, which is supposedly 95% full, right? Ms. Ombi and I went and they were, I mean, it's full. It is just full. They are using every space. And, you know, we have trailers at Matthew Waley, I think it's, is it Ms. Hummel at Norwich where they have, they're doing, was it speech therapy behind a curtain?
Well, and where were we when they, we were at James River when they're using little kitchen nets.
For reading, for reading.
Reading.
Reading labs. So it's, I mean, it's incredibly innovative and creative, but I think, you know, we needed a new elementary school yesterday and we need high schools expanded tomorrow. And that's not our fiscal reality, so we, and we have to deal with that. But I think, I think we need to, and the community would benefit from understanding that. For instance, York County has 1,200 more kids than we do, but they have four more schools. Compared to other divisions our size, we have comparatively few schools. They're in excellent condition, but we have too few schools. But we have to plan between now and then, and so if we use capacity as a lens for redistricting, I think it's important for us to understand what we gain. You know, if we move students at a high school level, do we, how many, you know, how many years do we gain? We've, right now, we have an expansion in our CIP for high schools, I think in three years, is that right, Dr. Heron?
I believe so.
Yeah, three years. And then building a new elementary school in 10, is that right? In 10 years, is that the 10th?
Design.
Design, and so 11 years for a new elementary school. So, you know, I think if we decide not to redistrict at high school, what does it mean to live with that? What does that mean in terms of trailers? If we decide to redistrict to alleviate space concerns, what does that mean in terms of trailers or construction? How many years do we buy? Do we push that out? So I think that's one thing I'd like to understand, you know, if we stay put for how long, how many years of stability does that buy us? So I would like to understand stability and, because redistricting is, causes tumult. We want to cause as little as possible for the most amount of stability as we can get. So if it means redistricting more than one level in exchange for stability, I would just like to understand that dynamic and is there an opportunity for space recovery by working with partners who occupy our spaces and seeing if there's an opportunity to gain space that way and then, or moving special programs? So that, that's something that I'd like to understand better is how many, if, whatever that decision is, what does it buy us and what does that mean in terms of trailers, essentially in terms of...
But it doesn't, we don't have to necessarily do both levels this year. We could do one this year, one next year, one this year, one two years from now. And the, I mean, the tumult is going to be the same. I would expect you have less tumult with middle school than you will with any of the other ranges, but, but I still advocate that we do just middle school next year and understand the process and, because nobody at this table, nobody in the administration has done a redistricting in this, in this school division from where, in the seats that they are in right now. And so we, we need to make sure that we understand and get our criteria right before we expand that out to areas, to other, to the elementary, the high schools. So I just, I think that, I think doing the middle school, because we have to do the middle school, is a good test case and trial case for us to all understand what is encompassing in redistricting and what that effect's going to have on maps and our criteria is, and then get that all situated and then move that out to the, to other levels.
Madam Chair, I guess just to Mr. Kelly's point, I guess to reiterate, but there, if we only redistrict at the middle school level, there is a financial impact. So we need to be fully aware of that cost because Jamestown is the most overcapacity and so we will have to purchase trailers. So we just need to be fully informed and fully aware and cognizant of the decisions that we're making. By the same token, I think we have to honor and respect our funding partners, and I know that I was at the James City County Board of Supervisors budget meeting where Mr. Hill made it very clear that he is looking to the school board to, to try to alleviate capital improvement plan expenditures by redistricting because they're trying to balance all the needs of the broader community. So to Ms. Cook's point, if we can kick the can down the curb with regard to the capital improvement plan expenditures when it comes to expanding our high schools, I think we at least need to understand that and to talk about it so that we're clear and respectful of our funding partners and their desires to meet the larger community's needs.
I agree. I think it's, she's not prepared to make that decision right now. I need to understand the intersection between redistricting and capacity. So, I mean, yeah. So any other thoughts on capacity?
I was trying to understand what, what Mr. Kelly was talking about. So I just want to ask, so, Mr. Kelly, are you suggesting that we just focus on redistricting? If I've understood what you've said, that you, that you think that we should just focus on redistricting middle, middle schools and not look at the other entities at this point? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, this year, right. But I, I mean, we do need the data and so that's just, that is where I am today. We get the data, we do.
I was thinking...
I'm sorry, but we just...
I thought we were just talking, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Anything else about capacity?
So what I'm hearing is the board would like some more specific numbers and maybe in a way that we could look at, if we were to take a big leap of redistricting high school as well, what would that buy us in terms of time? So would, is it only two years? Is it three years? Do we disrupt communities and then hit a certain number anyway? I know we've started to look at numbers and are providing them for you to show if we still agree as a board and a system that 90, at 90%, we should be planning to extend or build, then that's going to be a trigger number because if you go beyond that, you're too late to respond, as we're becoming with Jamestown High School. So really, how, when will we be at 90% and when will we really be at 100% in all three high schools? And is redistricting the best option? Or should we use trailers at Jamestown in particular to buy us some time? So we'll bring back to you and maybe take you through some of the numbers and what they look like in the next discussion, just to really inform this more deeply. they look like in the next discussion, just to really inform this more deeply. And we'll even, middle school doesn't need much review, everything's over 100% right now. So it's, we're really talking about high school and even potentially some of the things that we could do at elementary so that schools are not hitting 100%. And that is more a question of moving programs such as pre-K that we talked about last year, and perhaps utilizing space that we currently are, others are using. So let us grapple with that a little bit as, as administration, bring back a few slides to take you through some of the data next time so that you, we can really look at it more closely, not, not even in percentage, but literally in, in numbers of students. Would that be helpful?
That's it, okay. All right. Another piece of information that the, in the, in the document from the last meeting that Dr. Heron, her team provided, talked about proximity, does anyone want to discuss that at all? Okay. And another topic that was not, that this division has used before, that wasn't necessarily a staff recommendation, but that is economic integration. Does anyone want to talk about that?
I do think it should be something that we, it should be something that we look at because we have a lot of disparity right now with, between some of our schools. And if we don't, if we aren't, you know, for the schools that have a higher population of high-need students, if we're not correspondingly sinking a, a lot of support, additional support for those schools, then, then we should be looking at a more equitable distribution through redistricting. That's just my philosophy. I know it's not always possible. I, I don't want to be going down the road of sending kids that now go to Stonehouse, down to James River, you know, none of these ridiculous, like, really shifting people all over the place. But if there's a, a way to not, not have such a huge disparity of, of high-need students at one school versus another school, I, I think it's, that's just my feeling.
And I guess for me, again, getting back to the consultants, I think all of, all of these criteria are valid. And so what I would like to discuss with consultants are, again, getting what is best practice? What, what is the best combination of two or three or four or five criteria? What, what do most communities that look like us use? I would like to know that, rather than just throwing darts at various criteria. I would like to hear from experts. What is the best combination that's going to yield the most balanced schools in every way, rather than us trying to determine which, which ones we're picking?
Need our education on redistricting first before we continue.
Yeah, well, yeah, they need to, yeah, lead us. Yeah, I, I, researches indicates that economic integration does benefit all kids, even kids at the, at the high end of the socioeconomic ladder. And, you know, for me, it's not just looking at the snapshot of where free and reduced lunch numbers are now. What I'm compelled to, what I, what really moves me to thinking about this is, is the, the fact that conditions on the ground have changed. And so I wonder if we need to respond to that. And, you know, so since 2008, elementary school free and reduced lunch numbers have ranged from a drop in two percentage points all the way to an increase in 22 percentage points. And so I think that shift is, is a big deal, because that, that means a lot for those school communities. And in high school, you know, which we've talked about, since 2008, the range, you know, two schools have, one school has gone up eight percent, it's eight percentage points, another nine, but yet a third up 18. And so it's not just, again, looking at it today, but looking at where we've been over the last, you know, eight to nine years and, and seeing that those conditions on the ground has changed. And particularly in the high school, those changes and the, the stress that those schools are potentially under exacerbated by the school activity funds, I mean, when we look at the audit that we get every year, there's a big, there's a difference in those school activity funds by school. And I imagine that those differences exist also in the PTA budgets, also in the school booster budgets. And so I think, you know, we may elect not to change anything, but I think we have to do that, you know, clear-eyed, we have to be clear-eyed about the impact that that has on those school communities. And, and I think that, I agree with Mrs. Hummel, Ms. Hummel, that, you know, transfer, you know, having people travel a long distances to go to school, you know, is not ideal and I would not support that, but two of our high schools are essentially next door to each other. You have to, you know, access them from two different places, but, and so I think, I think a lot about that. I don't know what the answer is, I'm not an expert in this topic, but I would like to, to Mrs. Taylor's point, become at least half an expert on it and, and, and seek some advice. Again, I know it's not typical to use economic integration as a criteria, but it is done some places and it's done successfully some places. And so, anyway, that's sort of my, my thinking on that when I look at the information that's presented to us.
I guess my question is, what research are you referring to when you say that socioeconomic criteria is-
Economic integration. I'd be happy to send you some studies.
Yeah, I'd like to read it because, while I'm not opposed to necessarily using that as a criteria, I'm very opposed to the idea of, of students being moved long distances from their home. I mean, that makes no sense. I mean, all we're doing by doing that is increasing transportation cost and that, that's some, certainly something that we don't want to be in the business of doing.
I do think that, to Mrs. Cook's point, there are a lot of schools that are very close. I look at James Blair and Berkeley, they are very close to one another. So it, for, for, if we can achieve kind of a more equitable playing field, when you've got schools that are so close together, people aren't, there isn't a huge difference of, you know, people having to be, you're talking about a mile.
Right.
A mile difference. It's so, it's, it's not like a Stonehouse to James River, it's-
It makes sense if the schools are close together, but it makes no sense if you're talking about transporting people across the county.
Yep, I agree.
Is there anything else on that topic? Are there any other topics? Is everybody, so, I mean, at the end of the day, I think what I'd like to see is a consultant who's willing, who has the background information and expertise to guide us through, you know, speak to each of us, speak to senior administration, understand this community so that they can reflect back to us criteria for redistricting that they will then employ, you know, that, that is acceptable to us. The only thing that I'm, well, before I, on page two, there's a bullet point that talks about gender and ethnicity. Is that, is that?
I think when we were looking at the RFP, we were just wanting the ability to do whatever the board wanted. If those are things that are not of interest to the board, then we wouldn't want a map or a, to, to represent any of those. So we'd look for your guidance as to whether we include that in the RFP or not.
On page two of, of the, it's called 5-2 dash, 5-2-17 redistricting statement, is that what it's called?
So what I'm hearing for the options, you may be looking for the ability to do one that would show socioeconomic status of students, not grade level, gender or ethnicity, obviously.
I mean, grade levels seems okay to me, but gender and ethnicity don't seem-
Irrelevant.
I agree. What do you guys think? Yeah.
I don't think you can control who lives where and who brings children in a certain area.
Gender.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so it's on the downwind.
Yeah, depending on whether you're the minority or the majority there, it could be good, right? And another, so, here, I think it says it calls for three maps, three options. If, if we do high school, I'd like to, three for middle school's fine, but if we do high school, I'd like it to be four and I'd like that fourth to be as-is. Does that make sense?
As-is?
No change.
No change.
Like current options.
As-is? Let's do it one more time. What is that, what do you mean?
So we're asking for three maps, right? And so-
So that'd be the, where we are today?
Right.
Like no change.
So in other words, it gives us an opportunity to really explore doing it with criteria based on this board's criteria, input from the community, professional expertise, but...
Don't already have the maps that we are at the end?
Well, yeah, it's not going to, that-
One option would be that we just wouldn't change anything.
Yeah.
What we're actually asking for is three new maps in addition to the one we already possess.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just because I don't think this, I don't think, I mean, we're still grappling with this issue. And so we need to let the administration move forward. Three maps is typical. I want three well-considered maps that may be different than what we have. So, and I would frankly like the same on the elementary school level, because capacity is such an issue there and, because it doesn't do us any harm to get a bid on a third level and then accept or reject that at that time. But, you know, I, I understand we decided not to do elementary school at that, the last meeting, so, but the feeder pattern thing, conversation made me rethink that. So. All right. We're all set? I'm sorry?
So is Dr. Heron all set?
Yeah, do you have everything you need?
Yes, I believe we have the guidance. We need to readjust some of the language and go ahead and issue an RFP within the next 10 days.
And then, so our next step would be to pick this back up in, I don't have it in the thing, July? Is it July? Because they'd have to review the RFPs, right? Is that right?
It has to be in the street for 30 days, I believe.
So we would probably next see it at a work session, either, so maybe we would, because we'd have to approve-
It goes for 30 days, then staff would be getting together to go through the selection and then they would bring that to the board. So it'll be on an agenda for the approval of a vendor or consultant, but an actual discussion with the consultant would be after that, again, once you've approved the vendor. So potentially there'll be no major discussion of the actual-
Right.
-process of redistricting until we were ready to do that.
Right. That would be in the fall, probably, but, so we might see the RFP approval in June, but it could be July, right?
It'd be the July meeting.
Okay. Anything else on this? I want to thank you all very much for the conversation. Appreciate it. Everybody looks so happy.
I'm tired.
Okay, try to breeze through this, let me find my agenda here. Sorry, excuse me. So that brings us to policies.
Yay.
Ms. Hummel and Mrs. Young, I mean, Mrs. Taylor, sorry. 8.01, revised, recode and rename policy BDDB, Agenda Preparation, Dissemination and Format to Policy BDDC, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination.
So we just made a few small changes to this document, adding in the vice chair, talking about how things were delivered to the board. Now it's through board docs, they're not hand-delivered. So, of course, these things needed to be updated.
Ms. Taylor's going to have to do all this since I have no internet.
Oh, do you, oh, okay. Do you want, here, let me move this.
No, it's all right.
Okay. You're happy.
I'm happy to let Ms. Taylor take it.
Any questions about this one?
Nope.
Okay. Just one comment about it, that if you look at the VSBA, I'm perfect, this is great, I'm perfectly happy with it and I appreciate very much the work that was put into it. But if you look at the VSBA policy, it's considerably shorter. And one of the things that I would like to see us do over time as we do this policy review is that, because this seems more like a procedure to me. And so to me, the policy should be short and the procedure should be longer, and for us, our procedures are in SOPs. And so as we go through these policies that are mirrored in our SOP, it seems to me that the policy should be short and, and fairly flexible, and then the SOP should be longer and more customized to the board's needs at the time. And then anytime you have to change, that you decide to change the SOP, you don't have to go back and change the policy. So that's just a-
Where were you in our, in our policy meeting?
Sorry. That's just, yeah.
That would have been an illegal meeting, that would have happened.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I can make any meeting law. Okay, so thank you very much. Item 8.02, revised policy BDDH/KD, public participation at school board meetings.
Okay, so much of this one was left the same, as you can see from the redline copy, there's very few edits. And we specifically focused on special accommodations due to communication disabilities. And you'll see that in the third paragraph.
And that's the piece that was added, that was recommended from the CAC, so thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay. Item 8.03, adoption of policy JFCC student code, student conduct on school buses, we've heard a little about, about this already. Do you, does anyone have any questions for, this is you, right?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Bourgeois?
Call anybody else up, why you calling?
Because it was our policy.
Because those were ours, the first two were ours.
I could have made Mrs. Taylor go to the board.
Well, there you go.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'll just briefly explain for this policy and the next policy. What you're seeing here is getting us aligned with the VSBA policy. Formerly, this information was in EEACC, which is why it's on board next for consideration for retirement. We wanted the student part in the student section of the policy.
All right. So that was 8.04. Now, 8.05, revised policy IGD, extracurricular activities.
Any questions on this one? Basically, we had some repetition of wording. If you take a look at the previous policy, line seven through nine had been repeated in 16 through 19. So it was just cleaning up some wording, some wonderful wordsmith suggestions, but other than that, we, we just cleaned and tightened it up a little bit.
Any questions? So, I'm sorry, I do have a question. So when we started this grand adventure of going through all of our policies, we started out with excess of 280, right? It's like 280, so, and so I think part of the idea was to retire those that didn't have a VSBA policy unless there was a compelling reason. So could you help me understand why we need this if VSBA doesn't think we do?
We took a look at this policy and we noticed that there were two things in there that we thought were pretty important. One is that extracurricular activities were under the direction of the principals and that was really not stated elsewhere. And the second is the periodic review, and we thought that that was also an important factor to keep in despite no VSBA, and council agreed.
Great, thank you. 8.06, retire policy IGD, C, student social events.
So once again, no VSBA policy. We believed that we didn't necessarily need a policy that addressed school parties. Individual schools have set their own procedures for that, and also the same for school dances. The expectation for school dances at the secondary level are in student handbooks for those schools.
Questions? Okay. Item 8.07, retire policy IGI intramural, intramural programs.
This is another one that didn't have a VSBA policy. We did a little research and we do not have VS, intramural programs going on. There's lots of students participating in club sports and pickup games, but we don't have a true intramural program at the moment.
No program, no policy.
Sounds good, yeah. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item 9.01, personnel actions. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Cerza, will you call the roll?
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Personnel actions pass as presented, thank you. Nine point zero two, request for proposal, number seventeen dash one-one-five-two-one, Design Services for the Lafayette High School Roof Replacement Project. May I have a motion, please?
Let me get there real quick. Madam Chair, I move approval of the award for request for proposal seventeen eleven five twenty-one, Design Services for the Lafayette High School Roof Replacement Project to Hudson Associates, in an amount not to exceed $180,000.
A second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, it's been moved in second, and Ms. Cerza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Thank you, the motion passes. That brings us to item ten point zero one, Board Members' Comments. Dr. Beers.
Uh, no, I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ombi?
I do. So I just wanted to reiterate again, it's a fun time of year for band and choral festivals, concerts, assessments, and competitions. I got to attend, Mr. Kelly was there too, the fifth grade all-district choir festival, which the students totally rocked it. Lafayette Band just got back from Myrtle Beach Festival, received all superior ratings. Hornsby Middle School just completed their jazz assessments, and they received all superiors, and I'm sure there's many others that have missed. I'm looking forward to attending more Hills Little Shop of Horrors. And wanted to just, again, share the importance of students participating in the arts. These are opportunities that they will take with them for a lifetime. I know my oldest son sang all through middle school and high school, and chose to sing in college, his first year in college, and that was his happy place. And so he went back to what was something that, you know, gave him a lot of joy in high school, and so hopefully he'll continue to sing. And I know that that's true for many students, whether it's acting or playing an instrument. And so those are so important. Also wanted to, to note that so many PTAs are now coordinating and implementing their annual fairs and festivals. I know DJ just had theirs, and Berkeley had theirs, and JBB had theirs, and the 39th Annual Strawberry Festivals just around the corner at Matthew Whaley. And wanted to thank all the countless hours that PTA and community members put into those events. They're a year in the planning, and they're a huge part of each school's culture and community. And so this, having just spent my la, my fifteenth year at DJ's Annual Country Fair, and my last year, you know, students look forward to that all year long. And, and, you know, the week before, students start getting really excited. And at DJ, they taped the principal to the door, and, you know, the kids thought that was the bomb. And so, just want to thank all of our volunteers for doing that. Ms. Hummel and I did have an opportunity to tour James River, and we learned more about the IB program, and we still have lots of questions, and we're looking forward to, to staff providing some more information to us, so we can learn more about how that program is impacting our students and achievement. And then just wanted to share with the community, too, there was an interesting commentary in Saturday's Virginia Gazette. I know when we were at, at the NSBA, we learned about implicit bias. And so there's an op-ed piece that's written by Joseph Philco about coming to understand the effects of white privilege, and it's very timely. And so I would just encourage folks to, to go to the Gazette and click on that. And it's just something very, very mindful, and something folks should consider, I think, because it certainly impacts our students every day. And so I think all of us can learn more about implicit bias.
Mr. Kelly.
Mrs. Ombi pretty much undercut everything I had to say. So I did enjoy the fifth grade chorus concert, I enjoyed the Fiddler on the Roof at Lafayette, looking forward to, I know, you left me something, you left me a number. So enjoyed Fiddler on the Roof, and I'm also looking at Little Shop of Horrors this week as well. The Teacher of the Year Ceremony was a wonderful event. The video, I think, was, was outstanding. And congratulations to all those teachers, and all the teachers that assist those teachers. It's, it's a community award, not just to this individual, so. We have several events coming up coming at the end of the year, retirement ceremonies, GED completion ceremonies, graduations, all those things are, are coming forward, and it's always an exciting time of the year to, to watch, to see, to see the achievement of our students as a, as a near graduation and completion of the academic year. I know we have, our high school students are in AP exams currently for this week and next week, and so they're all working hard, so it's, it's a fun time of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young?
I'm trying not to come off my seat. First of all, I just want to congratulate the people that, at Lafayette, who did Fiddler on the Roof, that was an amazing production, I enjoyed it thoroughly, and was, again, astonished at the acumen of our actors and singers in our school district. It was professionally done, and I, I loved it, it was wonderful. I think that's better, all, that's all I better say. Thank you very much.
Hummel.
Well, I don't have four kids going through a bunch of choir concerts and everything else, so, so yes, I agree with Mr. Kelly, I think that Lisa Ombi just Anyway, I went to the Fiddler on the Roof. It was all so great, it was wonderful, the Teacher of the Year was wonderful celebration. I too appreciate the slideshow that was done. I learned a lot about James River's IB program, and what a gem that school is. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Taylor?
And just to echo the sentiments about the Teacher of the Year, it's always an amazing event, and I love to hear about the teachers and students' successes in the classroom, because we don't get to do that very often. So it's wonderful to be able to celebrate that. And is there a reason we don't talk about the tour we had today?
Okay, steal my thunder, go for it. They, they deserve it for you.
Hello, we went out and wore hard hats today, going into James Blair, so we got to have that tour. And I think it's going to be quite an experience seeing this from start to finish, it'll be very interesting.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for everyone who arranged that, it was great.
I think Mrs. Ombi wants to go back, she was at the Fiddler on the Roof.
I was there too, it was the bomb, I was there opening night.
So, yeah.
It was the bomb.
So we had nothing to sell after, Mrs. Ombi.
Yeah, so, yeah, my list, I just checked everything off, because, so, and so that brings us to item eleven point, so, but I echo everything, let me just say that. That brings us to upcoming events, which Mr. Kelly also listed, but I'll do it anyway, because, because I think, I'm, I think I'm compelled to. On May seventh is the NAACP Life Membership Awards Banquet. On May, May tenth is the Student Advisory Committee at three o'clock at Jamestown High School. May eleventh, the CAC meeting at the James City County Community Center at 6:30. On May seventeenth, the Policy Committee at 4:00 PM in the Annex in room 309. May eighteenth, the Retirement and Service Pin Ceremony at 5:00 PM in the Motocross Woods Room at the School of Education, College William and Mary. On the nineteenth of May, we have a V S B A Board Development Retreat at the V S B A offices in Charlottesville. On the twenty-third of May, we've got the Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee at 4:00 PM, room 1088 in the School Board Central Office. On the twenty-fifth of May, we have a Freedom of Information Act Workshop at 5:30 in room 300 here in the Annex. And finally, on the thirty-first of May, we have a School Liaison Committee at 4:00 PM, the city is hosting. If you would like the location, ask them. So, that brings us to eleven point zero two, upcoming meetings. We had on the calendar a special call meeting for the fifteenth of May that we will not have. Okay? So everybody seemed okay with that. So we will then meet in closed session on the sixteenth of May at six o'clock in the City Council Work Session Room at the Stryker, followed by a regular meeting on the sixteenth at 6:30 in City Council Chambers. And then on the sixth of June at 6:00 PM, here in the Annex in room 309, we will go into closed session, followed by a work session and action items on, at 6:30 in room 300. So that brings us to item twelve point zero one, agenda items set for the regular, next regular meeting. So on that, we will cover the Code of Conduct, the Carl Perkins Grant, school bus purchase, DJ Montague projects, the middle school, high school technology. We will also, in addition to the things we discussed tonight, have a look at the contract renewal book and adopt that in addition to the salary schedule. Likewise, we will also have two budgets, the operating budget for next fiscal year, and then also the CIP budget. And redistricting, we will not discuss, we will next see that when the RFP comes back for our approval. Anything else?
Equity.
Equity, thank you, I apologize. We will be, can you remind us what that is?
Emergent Scholars.
Emergent Scholars, yes, okay. The gifted, yeah, the gifted program. Great, excellent, thank you for that. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.